It's on your mantle, please. It's on your mantle, please.
Put it far place there, so I can look at it.
No, it's all right. No one's watching. No one's, no one's watching. I mean, you know, everybody like looks at it later, but I have a content underneath of it and they just go to that. And so any of the, uh, we're talking. That's okay. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm here. See, you have coffee. In a real cup? That's hilarious. You're so much fun.
She goes to submit to the AIMID summit. She tell you, her, I sit and do a panel. Are you seriously going to submit to this? Because we've had a lot of, it's really good. She's got the violin player. The opening video. I don't know. Audience. I would think AIM would kind of, hmm, not sure what to do. Would have any interest in that.
Honestly. There should be more people that relate to that than that.
And the others might not.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, it is five o'clock. Here on April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we'll go ahead and call the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting door. Uh, we will start with the, uh, roll call. Dan, please.
Dan, lift your board of public works and safety.
Jake missing city attorney.
Justin Green, mayor.
Sally Haddebo, City Park Treasurer.
Orin Jones, Board of Public Works and Safety.
All members are present and accounted for, so we do have a forum. We will proceed with the agenda. Uh, you'll start with minutes of the March eleventh meeting on pages one and two.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Dan makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Start second. So all favors say aye.
Aye.
Uh, pose same sign. Okay, please. Now, uh, if you will go, uh, to your reports. Uh, Brandon got his submitted. Uh, he is on assignment as we speak. Uh, so if you will, uh, include his report. Or if there's a question I can answer, so be it. If not. He's working with Duke tonight on a, our issue. Anything on that one?
I have none.
Okay, please, if you will, your water report is finished. Second. And you will see it is standard issue. Been doing several line leaks and getting some of those caught up after the change of weather. And starting to round off, getting those pretty well tackled now. Questions on that? Then to finish that on page three, uh, your utility adjustment report.
I'll make a motion to accept the utility adjustment.
Mr. Jones makes a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Dan seconds. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay. Um, I want to jump down for a second. Uh, Mr. Ruff, you come to podium. Uh, Derek Ruff has asked, uh, board if we could entertain doing another bike night. Uh, please, uh, tell us how it went last season and what you want to do this season.
Uh, pretty much the same. Uh, really no plans on food trucks or vans, but, uh, if, if there is, I would definitely get with, get with the board before I went ahead and did it. I did outline some, uh, some dates right there. Also, there's, uh, my, my cellphone and my, uh, office phone, they were blue. Uh, just, uh, normal deal still. Uh, I mean, being a former military policeman for twenty-three years, I look for crazy activity at this kind of thing. There was no like hygiene or nothing, uh, Susan or Sally.
No shit.
But, uh, I look for silly stuff like that. I mean, having a son as a city cop, future doctor, I'm always a deputy, white works at dispatch. Former military police on pub and crap, so. I trust you guys. If anything happens, I'll be the first call. So most of the time it's, I'm usually the youngest one there. I'm fifty-one. So this is a bunch of guys like, like ride bikes, like get together, just like the, uh, the classic auto guys.
Yeah. So. And when you say east side, you mean the interior?
Yeah, silver by a mile way. There was a special request over there. I already gave Chief Mills, uh, a copy. Uh, I spoke with Assistant Police Chief, uh, Ronnie Mays. Uh, spoke with Ronnie. Uh, was going to get with Eric, just if there's cones available, I'll go early enough to where I can cone it off to where, you know, you don't have, you know, Mexican restaurant parking, always gets in the way.
Uh, Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I think it went smoothly last year.
Board, any question of Mr. Ruff? Uh, appreciate you doing it, putting it together. Uh, yeah, I think you had a good event last season and why not keep doing it?
Right.
Uh, board seek a motion to allow, uh, Mr. Ruff and his dates this summer for his Saturday night bike, uh, event.
I will make a motion to proceed with Derek Ruff's bike night date events.
I'm second. Motion made second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything comes up, changes this, let us know.
Will do.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Lori, Lori Gilstrap. Lori, did you come? Okay, well, um, we still don't know exactly what date she was looking for, so, um, we'll see if we can get ahold of her. Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, yeah, please. Okay, uh, pardon me, making notes and talking and reading at the same time. Project updates, uh, board, uh, I've got something a little bit in duplicate that I want to share with the council here in a little while, but I'll share with you as well. Uh, certainly from the public safety side of it. Uh, yesterday there was an event. We had, uh, our version of the solar eclipse and I want to tell you it went very well. Uh, lot of planning, a lot of hours, a lot of thought, a lot of concern, uh, I will tell you. By and large, a very smooth, very good event. Emergency services can attest, uh, had just a couple of little hiccups that, ah, guys by and large worked themselves out fairly quick. And, uh, rough head count, uh, not scientific by any stretch of imagination. Probably had twenty-five hundred, three thousand visitors, maybe, maybe a few more than three thousand. Certainly we, uh, didn't see all the, uh, city limit, uh, activity, but, um, there, there was a fair amount. Uh, felt short a little bit of what our, our state predictions were, kind of felt like that. Been saying that all along. We weren't sure that that high watermark was really going to, going to happen. And, uh, that's okay. Uh, we enjoyed it as a community, our citizens and our, our businesses. Uh, but I'll tell you, you know, it did go without any real issue. Uh, and, uh, folks were very courteous, uh, very complimentary of our community. Uh, talked and chatted with a lot of them. Uh, the furthest, uh, traveler was from Spain. Uh, wrote, really blew my mind, uh, but we, uh, and maybe some of you folks met those same people. Tina, I don't know. They were on the square when I met them. They were from Spain. And so, uh, anyways, uh, you know, Texas, Florida, uh, Carolinas, um, there are several outlined states, but the one from Spain really got me. And, uh, uh, they, they really enjoyed being here. Uh, nevertheless, uh, it, it was a good day. Uh, the weather was right, uh, and it just don't get it really well, so it's more important. There, there were no issues and, uh, had a lot of compliments. Again, I think that's the two, two takeaways, no issues and we had a lot of compliments about our community. Goodness, a lot of them. Um, okay. Uh, couple other items here. The, uh, PD has some new hires. They did some training yet today, so their schedule was not full. Uh, you did acknowledge and, uh, allow the new hires to take place last month, so they will be here next meeting to be introduced. But, uh, they are, uh, advancing their training and getting settled. And so, uh, we'll have them here next meeting for formal introductions and get a few pictures and, and have that, uh, for the press. Uh, another item of good news, uh, a lot of good news tonight. Uh, once again, uh, I made an application to Hoosier Uplands with a very successful, uh, grant award. Uh, it's going to benefit the PD and the fire department along with the upgrade to their security camera system. Uh, I can't say enough about Hoosier Uplands and helping the city of Salem. Uh, David Miller and his crew, uh, goodness, when they have something available and we submit. Um, by God, they're always quick to, to help us and respond and, uh, uh, we're very fortunate to have Hoosier Uplands helping us and assisting and being community minded as they are. And, uh, so that will be moving forward and, and, uh, gosh, guys, tell me, that's about a eighteen, twenty-year-old antiquated system that just can't get parts for and. Time, correct? It's just time. And so, um, I want to make that upgrade thanks to Hoosier Uplands. Uh, okay, and then, um, as far as, uh, traffic, uh, pardon me, uh, the phase one, uh, construction of North Main. Uh, Milestone made a press release, uh, to the, uh, business owners and the residents on North Main, as well as any travelers, uh, their announcement of, uh, their final approach, your final work, their, basically their punch list of what's left. So, uh, we'll tell you, board, uh, today, uh, they were going to mobilize their, uh, patching equipment. Uh, they'll patch up and down, uh, both sides and then, uh, later this week, if not Monday, then they'll mill. They'll mill the entire corridor and then, uh, the paving pattern will start thereafter. It is obviously predicated on a little bit of weather. Uh, we've seen some forecast of rain, so I'm not sure it will get all done by Friday in prep for next week. So some of the prep may have to take, uh, over into Monday and Tuesday and then paving thereafter. Uh, the key takeaway is there will not be any closures. Yes, uh, some significant, uh, traffic control, uh, with their crew, not, not city PD, it's their crew. Uh, they'll do some significant traffic control in keeping that north and south, uh, open and continuing that corridor. What will happen is they'll do, uh, basically in essence, a, a shutdown of half of the square and reroute, uh, in a different direction. So some of you who've always wanted to drive backwards on the square, you're going to get your opportunity. You can go the wrong way, uh, when you shouldn't, but it'll be very much allowed. So, uh, anyway, um, punch list is winding down. And so after that, we've got some street lights that go up, a few more, uh, truckloads of sawed. Uh, there'll be some, uh, uh, final touches that they'll have and then they'll be done. Uh, Milestone will have that, uh, finished. So, uh, all good news, uh, be out of here, uh, done before the fair parade, uh, done before, uh, the summer season and, uh, oh, some trees. There's, there's a handful of trees that go up North Main, so, um, it just looked really nice. And I know we're all ready to see the final product. Okay, Sally, was there anything there I missed?
No.
Okay. All right, let's jump down then. I think we're ready for new business. Uh, board, um, want to propose something to you and I think, uh, it, uh, behooves us as, as a board of works and a common council to hold a joint work session. Uh, I'd like to put this together and, and certainly this is an, an open meeting. Uh, a work session is, is not a meeting by action, it's a meeting by information and there's, there's a key difference. There'd be no action taken. Uh, strictly information session and so, um, would like to do that with the common council and the board of works and, and go over some historic data. Uh, like to go through that, uh, gosh, get us back to twenty-ten. Uh, I think there's still some, uh, information, uh, from the past that is very relevant to share today, but, uh, I'd like to make sure everybody understands and how we got to where we were, uh, and understand what the term redundant waterline means. And so, uh, we'd like to do this for work session and certainly it's going to be open. Uh, if I'd like to come chat, uh, or pardon me, come and listen, uh, could do that. Uh, Sally, what was the date? Sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Board, I'll, I'll ask you just in, in casual, if you think your calendar would work to that, I'll ask the common council the same date. Uh, you, you may want to confer that and then let me know, but sixteenth maybe. If, if we need to back it up, uh, we'll certainly get Steve. Uh, he's got a little bit tighter schedule. We'll ask him here a little bit, but, um, that's what we'll shoot for.
What time do you propose, Mayor?
You'd like it after five, correct?
It'd be five.
Okay, uh, we'll probably do it at five. Again, if, if Steve, when he gets here, Roger and Dylan, oh, there's Dylan, but we'll make sure everybody's good with that time. Uh, I think it would, would be beneficial to everybody. Uh, again, there's some things that, uh, Steve asked for and he didn't know and I got, got to him and, and so, uh, there's some things that, uh, maybe another councilman or two, and certainly would like to share that with you. And so let's, let's do that. I think it'll be helpful. A lot of years of some, some data that might, might prove useful. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, board, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, uh, public square parking. In pages four through six, uh, HWC, uh, has presented, uh, what the ADA requirements are. Uh, again, under code for, uh, the handicap parking. We need to adjust that and doing that, that will take an amendment to the traffic code. And doing that, that does change some of the parking parameters that, uh, are set now and that were not necessarily accurate in twenty-ten, uh, after the last, uh, downtown square, uh, project. So, uh, in doing that, we're, we're making a couple of provisions and corrections at the same time. Uh, as you see, uh, what is, uh, in the schematic there and that shows, uh, north gate on the top of your screen. It is laid out appropriately. That's the north gate at the top. Um, to comply with that, uh, certainly there was consideration of, uh, those nine-foot spaces were never adequate for today's style of vehicles. And, uh, I will tell you from a, a, a call here, uh, there's a lot of those calls about doorings and this, uh, will certainly help alleviate a few of them and getting anything true, uh, parking space that's, should be ten-foot. Council or, or pardon me, board, there are still works in, uh, getting additional parking off square. We've got two properties we're still pursuing to help add, uh, additional parking in those. Uh, one of them, uh, is one block off and one of them, like, another block off. So, uh, I think there are still some parking remedies, uh, that will add to the downtown and downtown corridor, uh, still coming. So, uh, Sally, is there anything else in ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten I've left off? Jake, anything you'd like to say to that?
Uh, nothing to add.
Uh, board, it would be then appropriate to, um, take a vote on twenty twenty-four dash ten, uh, and then, uh, send that to the council to amend the traffic code. That's where the sentence in the traffic code.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Dan makes a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Jones seconds. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, um, if you will, board, uh, page the seven through nineteen, your utility voucher of claims. Okay, any questions on the council table?
I'll make a motion to accept the matter.
Right, makes a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Dan seconds. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay. Uh, we had no comments tonight, so, uh, board, we would seek motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Motion at five nineteen. Common council will convene at five thirty. Chief, you said you got list for these?
Yes.
Just like that, you're a whole new band.
I know. And I don't look either.
I know.
What brings you with us tonight?
I'm at H A S.
Oh, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that's on the item is there's a discussion of setting or scheduling a work session to the board of works. But other than just scheduling that work session, that's the only item of the agenda. For some reason I keep it on like Monday. And I think it's just because of the routine of like normally this is, normally this is Monday. But then I've got a couple of other things going on. It's like they're just like, uh, the usual order. So, yeah, so I'm just, I'm off.
So Roger?
Yes.
Were you surprised at the size of the babies?
Yeah. That's crazy. That's like fourteen pounds.
Yeah.
She's a trooper. I believe. The transit happened so quickly. Transit happened so quickly. License section said that hurt drops them.
The baby's dead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did he send you guys some of the pictures today? Just of them together?
Yeah.
Yeah. Something else?
That you're going to.
Oh, okay.
There's an internal controls. There's an internal controls. Thing you have to watch and assign as long as say that you. Every employee and everybody that's on.
It was amazing.
What do you think?
That's something that's online.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just thank you. Great.
Feeling okay.
One yesterday, the trip to London.
Yeah, they had twenty-seven. It's kind of, it's getting on their schedule, so I don't know.
Feeling okay.
Getting around. Yes.
There's one chair. You've got to listen.
Did you get your login to work?
Oddly enough, I use district two even though it was assigned to him because he hasn't logged into his yet. So I was gonna text Melissa or email Melissa tomorrow. The settlement city council of district five, so district five is at large, does not work whatsoever. It's not a registered county, so they'll need to change that one to whatever they want assigned to him. Because I use district two as well as as it was assigned because he didn't log in. But it worked. Yeah, district two works, yeah. But the one that's saying, say on the city council of five, it's an example, name dot com is not working. I said the only thing I didn't do was I was like standing here as soon as the year.
Okay, it's five thirty. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order, excuse me, of the common council here April ninth, twenty twenty-four, in council chambers. Uh, we'll start the agenda with the invocation followed by the pledge of everybody to stand, please. Danny?
Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you today in humility and in faith. We thank you for all you've given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and be faithful in our service to you. Lord, give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. And as we meet here tonight, I hope that the things that we say and do will be for the betterment of this county. Lord, we ask these sayings in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Uh, we'll do real call. Uh, Dan, please.
Dan, live to district one.
Dylan Moore, district two. Jake Visson, city attorney.
Justin Green, mayor.
Sorry, I have a city clerk treasurer.
Steve Crane, district three.
Randy Lee, district four.
Roger Pennington, at large. Everyone is here accounted for, so we do have a call. We will proceed. Okay, uh, first on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing as advertised with L P C. Uh, the public hearing is to reestablish the cumulative capital development fund known as C C D F, uh, ordinance twenty-four dash nine. Uh, this uh reestablishing is under Indiana Code, the state board of accounts, uh, to allow that fund to uh continue. Uh, Sally, would you like to speak to that for a moment?
Um, this fund use is used for numerous things, um, and it is not up to where it needs to be according to the state board of accounts, so we're trying to get it to the percentage it's supposed to be.
And so in reestablishing, that takes the uh motion, the ordinance, uh, and that sets that uh fund to the current um tax rate.
Right.
Okay, and it is uh now at three cents?
Three point one, yeah.
It is currently at three point one and change. Uh, we don't have the exact number uh of the cents off of the three point one, but it is right there at three cents. Um, and so this will reestablish it. Uh, Sally, what does that put it to?
Five cents.
So this is five cents under state board of accounts guidance and suggestion.
Right.
Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience tonight to speak on uh behalf of reestablishing the KUM cap development fund? One, two, three? Is there anybody in the audience tonight to speak against reestablishing the KUM cap development fund? One, two, three? Okay, council would seek motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Y'all make some motion.
I'll second that motion.
Dan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, council, uh, so you uh have that in front of you on page one and page two. Uh, Jake, anything you want to add to that for the council's consideration?
Um, just briefly, and I'm sure everyone's fairly familiar with this. Essentially, the this fund is, you know, for capital improvements, uh, use of the city. I mean, this could be anything from window repaired, roof repaired, to HVAC, um, certain expenses like this to top up, you know, within the city. I don't have anything else to offer.
Okay.
So we still currently have this fund set up. We're just rewarding it to what state board of accounts says it has to be.
Right.
Oh, allowed up to.
Oh, allowed up to.
So that's the provision in code now is the uh, the five cent. Yeah.
When was the last time it was raised? How long was it at three point one?
Uh, years, years.
How much money's in that fund now?
Uh. Not leaps and bounds, uh, ten, twelve thousand by chance. One, one thing, um, doesn't show here in the narrative, that's one of those things if the um executive, pardon me, the fiscal body, they don't, you can only do it once a year, so if we don't, we'll bring it back to him next year.
Right now, there's not quite six thousand dollars.
Okay. I think what I thought. No, it does not generate much.
No.
So state board of accounts is the one that recommended this, or did we catch this ourselves and?
It was recommended by state board of accounts and D L G F.
Not something we have to do. They're just saying that we can do it. Did they recommend that?
They recommended. We're about the old ones. It's not bad.
Okay. So to be clear, it's five cents on each a hundred dollars assessed.
A hundred on assessed, yeah. And again, it's it's not anything.
Is there a cap?
That, that's, that's totally five cents.
Okay. So no, no proposed projects or earmarked any projects for this? This is just to increase the fund, to increase the valuation for more money in there?
To Jake's point, that does get used throughout the year for a variety of things. That certainly uh does, does get used. It doesn't go unspent. It does get used.
We wouldn't have any idea how much additional revenue it's gonna generate, would we? Just curious.
That's uh, because it's only unreal.
Yeah.
We probably need to consult with a municipal advisor.
I was gonna say.
Make that calculation.
I don't even feel comfortable saying five cents on the assessment across the city civil. Roger, that would be a.
I don't have any idea what our total A V is.
Well, I don't know. It's, it's calculated to the exact real estate because you could go take off the circuit breaker back out of it. No, I. Do you see what you received last year? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine.
Okay, motion made to approve twenty twenty-four dash nine.
I'll second.
Steve seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
Okay, through two. Jake, do you want um to give them an option of suspending second read, or do you want second read in May?
Uh, you can suspend second read. It's not required.
Okay. Board or council, pardon me, on that, um, would seek motion to suspend second read, then uh passed by majority vote. Is there a motion to suspend second read?
I'll make a motion to suspend second reading.
Dan makes the motion?
I'll second.
Steve seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes as well. We'll uh have Sally punch those in and send that to uh D L G F and that's state board of accounts. Sally, anything else on that item?
No.
Okay, okay, council, uh, start your agenda, please, minutes of the March eleventh, uh, pages three and four.
Motion to approve both minutes, mayor, or just?
Pardon me, council, you can take them both if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March eleven and March fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Roger makes the motion as a dual.
I'll second.
Uh, I think Dylan beat you by the pair. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay. Uh, reports, uh, your financial statements, six through ten. Sally, anything to add to that?
Nothing.
Okay, and thirteen and fourteen is your, uh, pardon me, pardon me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Any questions with Sally on that? Seek motion to acknowledge the financial statement.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial statement for March twenty twenty-four.
Dan makes the motion?
Second.
Roger seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Pardon me, uh, your senior report is on page thirteen and fourteen. Again, uh, a full list. I believe we've got two in attendance that can attest. You've been busy.
We have been busy. It's a very active place.
Yes, it is.
Uh, I'm not sure. We have a uh meeting on the seventeenth. It's our annual meeting. It's for all members. And uh, we also have our regular meeting, which we also will have an audit of, I'm the treasurer. We'll have the audit of the books, uh, March, uh, pre-March of this year, and we audit every, every quarter. We have an audit committee that goes over everything. We're in good financial shape so far. Uh, we did have a fundraiser, which we were disappointed, uh, but um we'll make that up somehow. Whenever we did think we're low in funds, we have, uh, we hold a fundraiser within ourselves, and we'd like to see all you members there sometime, and I know Danny has attended several things. And we have a dance on a Thursday night, uh, open to everybody. We get a lot of people from Mitchell. We have some good bands. If you like the boogie, we boogie. Don't have us when you come.
Uh, ju- just for the record, Dan's older than I am.
It's hard to believe, only six months.
You've been, you've been there as a guest before. We appreciate that, so I'll call you a guest. We had a good time, and we're hoping to get the county involved a little bit, which I've asked Preston, he's on one of the, he's the board member. And I can't get the county to fund anything, but we appreciate what the city does.
You bet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all, and Dale, all of you. You've put a lot of work in. We know it. Okay, uh, we will move on. Um, I've got a list, uh, project updates and unfinished business, so uh, pardon me if they overlap and interplay. Uh, they're all relevant, counsel. So I'll just jump in. Some of these I shared with board works in the last meeting. Yesterday, as you well know, uh, we were uh part of a national uh event, uh, the solar eclipse was certainly uh visible here, and we did uh participate. First and foremost, I want to say, you know, it was a very successful event in the sense of uh public safety. Our emergency services did an outstanding job, uh, police, fire, EMS, first responders, the whole job block. Uh, goodness, uh, thank you for being so attentive, and uh it speaks volumes of their capability and their dedication to the community. Uh, we had a lot of visitors. Uh, rough gauge, I would tell you, twenty-five hundred to three thousand, uh, for sure. I'm probably low, uh, within the uh corporation boundaries. I don't know. We had a lot more of that within the county. So uh, a, a good, good presence, uh, a lot of folks, uh, from out of town, of course, uh, besides their own residence. Kentucky seemed to be the populous license plate, uh, in our very crude, albeit, uh, account of who was here. Uh, California was the furthest, uh, in the continental United States. Uh, Texas, South Carolina, saw a few Michigan, a few Tennessee, a few Ohio. Uh, but I'll share with you, uh, yesterday morning, I had some folks from Spain, uh, chat with me, and uh just really was interested in how they got, come to Salem, why they come to Salem. But they were here for the duration and, and uh, we're glad to be here. And so uh they were actually patronizing our shops downtown, making their way around the square, uh, first thing yesterday morning. So we had a, a very good event. Uh, didn't have quite the crowd that some of the state officials had been predicting all along. Wasn't a big surprise. I, I thought it would waver and lane somewhat as the event got closer, and that's okay. Everybody had a good time, uh, had folks go places we weren't expecting. That was interesting to watch the migration of how people landed, where they parked their kiddos, and, and how they enjoyed the day. Uh, but it went very well. Uh, big thanks to Washington County Tourism, uh, supplying the glasses that we gave away. Chamber of Commerce had a big part, Economic Growth Partnership, uh, the heart of Salem, as well as employees. Uh, we just uh put a lot of, a lot of time into it. A lot of planning, and again, the, the thrust was public safety. Goodness, you know, when you have a large crowd of an unknown amount, uh, those of you who've done a lot of public safety know that, you know what? Large crowds can be problematic and not knowing how to handle uh something in the event of a crisis. So there's a lot of thought that went into this, a lot of preparation, so it went off without hitch. Perfect weather, uh, and enclosing a lot of compliments about our community. I got stopped several times. I made mad dashes around the square and in different places, uh, had a lot of compliments to this community, to our residents, and how well they liked Salem. And so I do, I think we, we treated our guests well, and it was reciprocal. As I tell you, there was uh very little evidence of any trash, any, anything that was wrong. Uh, when they left, they took care of everything they had. They were very respectful of our community, so it was a good event, a good event all the way around. Uh, let's see, goodness, got several things, council. Phase one, uh, construction on North Main, I want to share that with you. Uh, milestone did, uh, gave, did give, excuse me, did give some of the uh. Milestone did give, did give, excuse me, did give some of the merchants and the residents within the project limits a proposed time schedule of a punch list, and that punch list includes patching, milling, and paving. And so as that project does have an expiration, they are ahead of schedule. They're ahead of schedule almost a month, if not six weeks. And so in doing so, patching the bad spots naturally comes first, and that was going to be part of today's mobilization. So again, weather permitting, if we've watched the forecast, these next two days might have a little extra rain, so depending on how that funnels into their work schedule, they'll patch the entire project limits, then they'll start the milling process, and that milling will go fairly quick, and that will keep lanes open. They'll do that with systematic flagging. But then the big job is the paving, the final product, the final piece of the big equipment. And depending on how the days fall and the work schedule goes, they might be able to start paving Friday, but I want to say that's, again, weather permitting. So next week, we'll be paving of that corridor. And in doing so, they have got a more reflective plan of what, again, goes back to safety, some things that made sense. So they are going to pave in with a flagger, lane restriction type of activity. So when it starts, some of you who have always wanted to drive backwards around the square may get to do that very thing, but in a legal fashion. So she'll probably make a hot lapse. But anyways, that'll take place, so you'll merge over. There'll be no lane closures, and that's the key. You know, we said all along with this project, I don't want lane closures. Certainly lane restrictions and flagging would take place, so you'll be able to still maneuver with those lane adjustments. So again, weather permitting, the bulk of the big piece, the large equipment should be done end of next week. Other than that punch list, there's still some sod, there's still some light holes, some tree planting. So there's ancillary things that would really not affect traffic flow in any way, shape, or form. And so in doing so, you know, it's wrapping up early, and I know we're all glad that section will be done, but I will tell you, the final product is going to be very nice. It's no secret when you drive up and down Main, there around the library or in that corridor, you know, how bad the road has deteriorated just in lane shifting. I mean, the road was in bad shape, and so the timing couldn't be better to get this done, get that milled out, and get the new asphalt down. Okay, I'm going to get my glasses focused. Park and Rec. Tom Foltz came to me some time back and asked if he had any objections with picking up a new project within his department. And he's very gung ho and has knowledge of a very generic want a garden type activity. And so he asked if he could pick something up like that and fit that in the primary park and rec, and I will tell you, he is finalizing that April 19th and 20th of this month. And so look for his press releases and his publications, but he's already submitted what he wants to do, and he's got some booth rentals already lined up. And that's going to be a nice addition to Park and Rec and Park and Rec crew and what they're going to do and kind of push something a little different. And at the end of the day, again, it's for the kiddos. There's going to be a way to benefit those programs through this effort. So very, very proud that he want to take that up and lead the charge. He's doing a good job. City dog park behind the Humane Society's new building, I will tell you, we finally got fence installed. Fence was a little bit of a delay. Won't get in the weeds. Y'all know shipping delays right now. Anyways, won't get into that. So finally got all the extra panels because it's not completely leveled lot. There are some swales, swales that are necessary. Mike can attest, there's a lot of water I've got to take care of back there. And so making sure those swales were right and the dogs didn't get out, that job's about done, and perfect timing was here this spring. And yes, the dogs want to get back out and running, so that'll be available again to all dog owners and, well, even cats, I guess. Sally, if you want to take your cat, we won't stop you, but it's really for dogs. Okay.
Very nice area back there. Yeah, I've been over there last little bit, for the last week and a half or so.
Good.
But yeah, they've done a very, very good job back there. The new animal shelter building is phenomenal, top, very, very top of the line over there. So if you can get a chance, go over there and I'm sure we'll be happy to walk you through it and show you all the new additions because it's very, very nice on how everything is set up.
You bet.
Yeah.
Get up there and look at it if you have. Okay, next month, on Sally's diary, we're going to have some discussions on some changes that have been requested at the cemetery. Some interesting concepts, and I don't mean to be cold or disheartened, you know, we all understand having funerals, that's just part of life, right? We know it, but there's a lot of discussion on some options that people are looking at nowadays, and there's some terms floating around. Green burials, there's some other ways that are allowed under Indiana code. And we've had some funeral homes ask us to look at some options, so I'll bring that to you and then let you kind of dissect that. Little bit of a head scratcher, you know, we all think of a traditional funeral, it's either a burial or cremation. Well, there's actually a hybrid in there that seems to be having a little bit of attention. So between Jake and yourselves, we'll read through it and look, and council, that may be something we want to add to Crown Hill.
What kind of intensive work goes into that? Is there ordinance work that has to be done for the cemetery up there or?
Nothing changes on our workload, but as our code reads, we're very specific on what we allow. And so a hybrid burial is not allowed yet, although Indiana allows it.
I was going to say, is there permitting or anything else that we'd have to get for?
No, we just change our own internal documents and make it part of city code, if you had an appetite for it. And so I don't know. I don't know enough about it, other than Dylan, yes, we can do it, and other cemeteries, private and municipal own have done it, so.
It is becoming a big thing.
It's an additional option, and I do think families are probably seeking some of that, and we know that when we built the pavilion. And there's this, sometimes that traditional funeral, that traditional burial is not necessarily what everybody wants. So if it makes sense, guys, we'll talk about it.
What exactly is a green burial? I'm sorry. Compost is a good word.
Loosely translated, it has a little bit of a change on how the vault works. And please, don't anybody quote me because I don't have it in front of me. In essence, you still meet health standards. That's key and foremost. It's not a public safety issue. It meets health, health safety matters. But it kind of takes that traditional concrete vault and turns it into a dome. Interesting things, and I wouldn't be doing it justice if I tried to tell you how it exactly worked, start to finish, but there's variations in there. Some cemeteries have adopted that hybrid only, some have went as far as a true green burial, as I understand. Could be like your wicker and your bamboo caskets with no vault, and so they're basically for the immediate burial. There's no visitation time, there's no embalming. It's a direct burial with a, pardon me, decomposing casket. And again, I'm not trying to be crass or crude, but it, so there's variations there, so we'll have all that for you next month. It may take two, three months for you to do this and you can get an idea if it's a Crown Hill fit or not.
Do we have someone, do we have a connection on this thing that can?
So I'll bring that to you. Who's your uplets? I spoke to this and the Board of Works. I can't thank them enough, being big sponsors, big help of the city of Salem. I applied again for one of their local grants. It was notified last week. We were the recipient. David Miller and his crew, if you know about Hoosier Uplands, thank them again, even though we're doing it publicly now. They have been very gracious. I have seen numerous, and I can tell you, they've never said no when they had a grant open. We've done a good job and crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, I think, in our apps, and so they see the validity. And this particular one is going to help Firehouse and PD both with a security system upgrade. Those cameras and system is woefully out of date, and again, a matter of public safety, not just for the officers, but for the public. And that's a secure building. It needs to be secure. It needs to be monitored appropriately, and thanks to Hoosier Uplands, we're going to get that done. And again, big thanks to David Miller and his staff. One last thing. Board of Works last month, the March meeting, did approve new hires in the PD too. And so that process worked its way through with Perth and the Police Pension Board, et cetera, et cetera, that's moving. And so they're training right now and doing some things, and they had a long day today. They will be here next month for formal introductions, but I'll tell you, they've put a few hours in already and are hitting the ground running, and so very pleased to have them on board. Two, three, four, five. Leave it on them, Sally. Okay. Okay.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to revisit the Water Committee that we discussed last month. After that discussion, I know that you and the city attorney had some questions about some legal issues, so I took it upon myself to send a letter to the Attorney General of the state of Indiana and ask for an advisory opinion. I included a copy of the ordinance that was brought before this body last month and asked some simple questions. Does the city council have the authority to establish this committee? And can a member of the community who's not elected to this body serve on that task force? And with the help of State Representative Jim Lucas, got this fast track through. Jim's office was very helpful, working with the AG's office, and received a phone call late Friday night from him on a verbal opinion that was rendered from the Attorney General's office, and every question was answered yes. So there'll be a written response that will follow. It takes about two to three weeks to get that released. So with that being said, I would like to see us revisit this and move forward with this Water Committee if the board so chooses. I have a copy of that letter. If you'd like to see that letter, that was.
No, and just to go on record, it was never said that it couldn't happen, and certainly I could have called the Attorney General for you, knowing first name basis. There was no reason it couldn't, and that was never said. So yeah, Jim called me as well, and so yeah, we had a long talk, and yeah, there's nothing says you couldn't.
Okay.
So that was misunderstood.
Yeah, I just took it.
There was never, there was anything that said you couldn't.
There were some concerns about some legal issues. I think it was in the minutes that the city attorney had some issues there that wanted to get clarified, and so.
Certainly, because there are provisions that what the council does and what the Board of Works does is two separate issues, and that is what was being clarified. Yeah, nobody ever said you couldn't. Never did.
Okay. Well, then I would make a motion that we establish the Water Task Force as presented last month. I have a copy of that. If you need to pass that back around.
Jake, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, you're certainly welcome to consider it. I mean, I think ordinarily, we would ask that it be included in the packets for the members to consider and be posted on the agenda.
For the ordinance?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. Well, we didn't have an ordinance number last month for it. I don't know what the next ordinance number is in line. If we can assign an ordinance number to it tonight.
It would be 11.
11.
11. 2024-11.
So our motion needs to be changed to reflect that it needs to be added to our next month's minutes or?
Well, no, no. So ordinarily, if an ordinance is going to be introduced for consideration, you would want to include it in the packets with the council, include it on the posted agenda for the meeting, rather than just present it at the meeting directly.
Yeah, so Jake's saying so it wasn't advertised.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's procedurally, it's okay. I mean, I would recommend amending the agenda by vote to add it as an item, to add the ordinance number that you're considering, and then you can, you know, proceed with the discussion and vote on the ordinance that's been proposed.
So do I need to rescind my motion and make the motion to include that?
That's what I would recommend, yes.
So I will rescind the original motion and I will make the motion that we, tell me exactly how you word that again, what it needs to say?
I said I would make a motion to, I recommend making a motion to amend the agenda for the meeting today to consider ordinance number 2024-11, which is an ordinance, I don't recall the title of the ordinance that you have proposed, but the ordinance for the task force.
I would move that we amend the agenda tonight to allow ordinance 2024-11 to be established, the Water Committee Task Force. I'll second.
Motion made to add and amend to the agenda tonight. Dylan seconds. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Okay, Jake?
Okay, and then next would be if you would like to reintroduce the motion for the ordinance he proposed, and then we can proceed with discussion and then a vote.
Okay, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-11, Water Committee Task Force. Do you have that sheet in front of you, Roger? The original language? Yeah, yes. Well, you kind of just, I was going to ask you, will you kind of just run over it for everybody that's here again, so we can? Yes. Basically, this committee will consist of five members for the purpose of reviewing the current operations of the city's water plant and water infrastructure. Consist of two members of the city common council, three members from the community. Two members of the council will be appointed by the president, ten. Three, the three community members, one will be appointed by the city chief executive, which is the mayor. The two will be appointed through an application process that will be advertised, and those applications can be turned into the park treasurer's office, and then those positions will be filled by a majority vote of the common council. A committee chairperson will be selected. That will be a member of the common council. The three community members shall reside within the city of Salem city limits to include the two mile range and shall be a customer of the Salem water utility. No member will be paid for any services. Once the committee is completed, the committee will be terminated. It's a one-time committee. It will function. It will come back. The duties will be to review the current operating procedures of the Salem water utility, to include, but not limited to, personnel and duties, status of the current facilities, water production costs and consumer rates, consider recommendations to address any issues, items of concerns, inefficiencies or upgrades, and then provide an oral presentation and in writing, no later than three months, back to the common council. The presentation will include a finding of facts and a final proposal of the committee. And as the mayor and I discussed last Friday, this committee has no authority to set policy. These are recommendations that will be brought back. Those can be accepted. Some can be accepted. Some can be denied, whatever the will of the common council would be. I'll second this motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Is there a timeframe?
No longer than three months.
Three months.
I think it will be much faster than that. I think it will be much faster than that.
That's the maximum amount of time.
Any other discussion? Call for vote. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Ladies, there's why it wasn't on the agenda. Thank you for coming. Council, just to reiterate, you don't need an ordinance to do any fact-finding. That's the purview and the prerogative of being an elected official. Again, these boards are always open. You don't need an ordinance to find out what you want to know. So I implore you and encourage you to come find out things. And those bits of information are certainly easily found and easily had. So to that point, I am having a joint work session. I've asked the Board of Works to participate in this because there seems to be some facts that need to be reiterated and pointed out and need to go back in time. There's some historical data going back to 2010 exactly, a little before that. And so because I think that behooves a joint work session, so you all hear and see and have some documentation. Now, that's something Steve asked for, and so I'm working on that. And so in putting that together, it just makes sense. And so I think things can come from that. It's certainly a work session with no action, so that means there's no votes, no decisions made. It's strictly that data, data and conversation. And being a joint session without action does not constitute a meeting by action at all. It's just that joint work session. So the Board of Works was asked, and I'll ask you certainly, this date can change if the five... You can't. 16th next Tuesday. Huh? No. Tuesday. Sorry. 16th, five here.
Five p.m.
16. And that can be fluid. Does that?
What time? That'd be fine.
Okay.
Yep, it'd be fine.
That still work? Okay.
Is that an open meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I've knocked that far.
Oh, sorry.
You be quiet. Please, it's open. Goodness, sit, listen. And we'll have some data. We'll have some notes, and we'll sit here and have goodness. If it's an hour, fine. If it's two hours, fine. That's fine. And we'll go through some things and see if that helps and certainly get things started where you want to. Okay. Moving on. We have next, pardon me, TIF report, pages 15 through 21. Council, under having TIF districts, three to be exact, in the city of Salem, there is a requirement that a TIF report is gained each year to the fiscal body. This is one you don't take action on. It's merely information. And so we do this every year, either the March or the April meeting. And so pages 15 through 21, you'll see that report. That is Baker Tilly is the financial advisor for the Salem Redevelopment Commission. And so they have put that together. Sally, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, there's nothing.
Okay. I'm sorry, my glasses. Yeah, that's right, 15 through 21.
Yeah.
That was my next question. Oh, looky here. Mr. Semler, front and center. You must be parked psychic. Take the podium.
I wasn't expecting you.
I just, just announced to the council on behalf of Baker Tilly, our TIF report, the annual that is submitted, that is compiled each year on our three separate areas. So Jason Semler is a redevelopment specialist with Baker Tilly, and he does assist the redevelopment commission. And so as he thought he was two places at once, he made it here tonight.
I did.
Okay.
Thanks for having me here.
I just merely said that. It's the annual report. Here it is, three TIF districts, usually proven March and April. But what would you like to add?
Do you guys all have a copy of the report? As I said, this information is required to be filed on Gateway for a number of years now, very similar to the city's financial information that's filed into February. It's just this year, it was required that this report had to be presented to the council as well. So that's really all we're doing tonight is presenting to the council the information that's being filed on Gateway. I'm happy to go through it with you. Very similar to your AFR, your financial information. It's just the historical information for 2023. So if you look on there, it lists the three different TIF areas that the city has created. Salem allocation area number one, number two, and the Walmart allocation area. It lists, if you look there on the first page, when it was created, each area, and then when they expire. And so you can see allocation area one was created in 2011. Area two was created in 2014. Neither one of those have expiration dates based upon their creation. And then the Walmart area expires in 2040. Those areas could end sooner based upon the council and the RDC's desire, but they can go out beyond those dates. Below that, you just see the members of the redevelopment commission in 2023. And then if you turn to page two, the other requirements of the allocation area, again, similar to your AFR, is the amount of revenue collected in each area and the expenses that are included in each area, broken out by the different expense categories. So we put together a couple of graphs for you for that. And then page three, one of the requirements is the account balances for each of the funds. So you can see the ending balances as of December 30, 2023, of each of the allocation areas. And then below that was post-fulicity information on any bonds outstanding. And as you know, there is one bond outstanding in the Walmart allocation area where the new increment, the new TIF, new property tax that are collected, a portion of that is used to pay off the bonds. So it shows there, if things continue as planned, there'll be $1 million, $49,000 of principal interest that's still remaining to be paid out in that area. And then you can see last year, $290,000, $950,000 of principal was paid. In the last few schedules, what's also required is we're required to submit a list of all the parcels that are in each allocation area, along with their assessed value, the base, and the increments. So you can see, the first page there is the Salem allocation area number one. And if you turn to the second page, you can see the total assessed value, $55 million assessed value. The net assessed value is $47 million. The base is 16. So in this area, we capture $30 million of new assessed value. So if you remember how TIF areas work, when we created this original area, there was a base. That assessed value continues to flow through to the tax bases, the city, the school, library, campuses. And that's what that $16 million is. So the growth, that $30 million of assessed value, that's what the city redevelopment commission captures and generates that $1 million of revenue that you collect each year to help paper projects that insert that area. Turn to page, the next page, area two. This is actually the Walmart area in my list. It's about $10 million of what's captured in the Walmart allocation area, and then about $4.7 million is what you capture in area two. So again, this is really just a summary of everything that we filed on your behalf and have done for years. It just, this year has to be presented to the council.
Well, we've been presented to the council.
Oh, hey?
Yeah, we've done it.
Well, then you're ahead of everyone else.
Yes, we've been doing it religiously.
I'm happy to answer any questions. This is kind of a historical look. Later this summer, I usually, I meet with the redevelopment commission and do an annual TIF report, or invited our laughing tax units, and to talk about the future, talk about the estimates that are going forward, and how they compare to the redevelopment commission and the bond issues. So I'll be back here a couple months for that.
With Jason's help, we did look at some areas of decrement that actually were hurting assessed value within those. And the redevelopment commission's attorney, Jason and his crew, and the redevelopment commission all looked at those. And so we kind of did a balancing act to better some of that. As things either level off or occasionally have a lower assessment than one that was first went in, it did change some numbers. And so we actually added a few and took a few out. We may look at some of that again. I know there were some issues with TIF two that may come up this year. Anyway.
Revenue is generated in each of these TIF districts stays, has to stay in that particular TIF district to be used?
Well, here's the caveat, Roger. If there is something that is a direct benefit outside the TIF that the TIF could receive... Jason, you've got several examples. I always go to a fire hydrant. If a fire hydrant is across the street, but it's going to help put out that fire, then yes, you can put a fireplug in with this dollar outside the TIF district.
Yeah, if it's a capital project and it benefits the area, then you can spend money on it. It doesn't have to necessarily be in the allocation area, just benefit.
It looks like that the majority of the Walmart money right now is being generated is going to go towards...
Well, now that has to.
Right, yeah. Has to pay for the infrastructure that's put in off the bond.
Yep. But in that area, the TIF is coming in stronger than what we originally estimated, so the goal is to get those bonds paid off quicker, ones we're just made, so that TIF can start using, fund capital projects that'll continue to benefit that area as well.
Yeah, if we get a four or five years, that bond paid off, we may have four or five years of revenue. Counsel, any questions to Jason? Appreciate you coming over. Didn't dream you'd be here.
No, I might have, I mean, I can't, so it worked out perfect.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, next, ordinance 2024-10, public square parking. This came at the Board of Works meeting as well. This is a rendering of ADA compliance for handicap parking that is not to code now within the downtown district around the square. So this schematic does show what the extra spaces would look like. In doing so, there is a provision of changing, and quite frankly, an undersized design from 2010. If you recall, 2010 is when the last major project of sidewalk rehab was done through an Oprah grant through the heart of Salem. And doing that and working through it, there were some things, quite frankly, needed to change. If you know the large, if you will, extra feet on those parking islands were too far in the roadway. If you've noticed, those have been scaled back in report, and port appropriately. And the nine-foot parking is too narrow. The 10-foot needs to be addressed, certainly besides vehicles we all have, and the number of door endings that I get calls about. So this is what the provision would be. In looking at that, there are some other options still coming outside of this diagram for additional parking. We have two parcels, I'll tell you, we're still trying to proceed with by chance of increasing some downtown parking. One of them is about a block off, one less than a block. So there's always more options coming, but to amend traffic code, that's where this lies. Board of Works has approved. Plan is submitted for the appropriate striping and ADA compliance. Jake, we would just need the council then to amend traffic code to reflect this.
That's correct.
So this goes hand in hand to my update with the paving timeline.
Mayor, what was our... Did we have a net gain or a net... Did we have a loss of parking space?
It's a gain on ADA in which we were not in compliance with, and reduction of the foot, or gaining of the foot, however you want to take it. It does have been a reduction overall, but it's scattered. It's not centered in any one space. So there is a reduction. In doing that, though, I don't want to say we're trying to penalize anybody. That's goodness, that's not the message here, is to make it more appropriate. I will tell you, there's a lot of folks who say, "I can't pull in. I cannot get there." My SUV, my truck, it's actually hurting us having these narrow nine-foot spaces. I know it's a little bit of a hard pill to swallow, but it really will help get that opened up. It'll help the ADA. Well, we have to do the ADA. Goodness, we should. We should.
This is just on the outside skirt of the square, obviously? Is that correct?
No, we actually, all the pavement cities.
Okay. So we control the parking spots on the inside as well?
Yeah.
Making a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-10?
Roger makes the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Dylan Secondes, all affairs say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Okay. All right. Goodness, we've still got a ways to go, way from shore. Abatements, it is that season, counsel. Angie, if you take the podium. Counsel, you know, there is a compliance session. Some of you have sat through. Goodness, Randy and Roger have seen some of it and heard of it, so you'll get a crash course. Dylan has had a few more last year, but I think his was actually on a new abatement. So again, understand code. Any abatement that a fiscal body approves, within that period of abatement, then has to come back annually for compliance. So if the fiscal body gives a 10-year abatement, you've got nine years of compliance. And whether that's real estate, personal property, it still has to be vetted and then signed off on and then filed at the courthouse for them to get their abatement. One thing to keep in mind, abatement is not a level sliding, or level scaling, it's a sliding scale, pardon me. So you receive 100%, 90, 80, 70, and so on as the scale moves down. And so as an abatement starts to end its life cycle, they get less dollars removed. You have taken an approach as a fiscal body a number of years ago to limit personal property to five years, and I think that was wise. You still have the provision then. You have been granting 10 years on real estate. So tonight, before you, you have a number of those, and some are real property, some are personal property. So I digress. Please, we'll start GKN.
Anything? So what we have here, Washington Economic Growth Partnership is presenting on behalf of seven different organizations within the city limits. And so first, I have GKN Center Metals. All of those that you will see for GKN are personal property. Happy to try to answer any questions that you may have about that. But again, this is just annual compliance with abatements that were already approved. The first one that we have here will be expiring after this year. We have another one for '27. We have one in '26, another in '26, one in '25, '25, and then another one towards this coming year. So they are getting closer to the end of their life cycle here for GKN. Is there any questions on that, or would you like me to move on?
Counsel, you have two options. If you'd like her to present them all, you can vote accordingly in one motion. If you would like her to stop intermittently and approve said business abatements, whether they've got one or seven, you can do it that way. do it that way. Uh, if you have questions, it might be easier to, to approve them one at a time.
These are abatements that's already been approved. These are just the compliance, just the compliance portion.
So what they've done on each of these documents is completed, um, put their actual numbers for number of employees, um, to date, um, and then actual salaries and then any cost and values with their, uh, personal property or real estate.
So on the SV1 that they filled out, and so I'm going to use this first one as an example here, like GKN. On their SV1, they estimated that they were going to have, you know, 392 employees and their actual count of employees to this, to this sheet is 366.
That's correct.
Is that something that we should be concerned with? Is that, I mean, I mean, looking at a compliance here, is that, did they shoot too high? Did they lose people? Did they lay people off? What, what?
And I'll be very honest with you. I know I've had Jennifer Nicholson here on behalf of Peerless here. And so Peerless, who my nurse has a little bit of similar situation on, everybody does. But I think some of it, um, is a change in number of orders that they're fulfilling just over the lifetime of this abatement. You know, since this was first approved, almost 10 years, um, just probably their scope of work has changed where the number of employees that they need, um, maybe has shifted. And so to be very, very honest with you, I did email the account for GKN to ask that question. I have not heard back from him yet. Uh, I know, you know, Peerless is here. He can answer on, on behalf of their own company, but my, my estimate would be that, you know, over this life cycle of 10 years, they just, you know, saw a change in the number of needed employees, um, probably whether through attrition, um, changes in supply of orders that they're receiving, things of that nature. Not to say that their abatement isn't still needed and relevant, um, but that's probably a reason for the shindling of employees. But I can't say for certain.
It's like they over exceeded the salary.
Well, correct. And to that point, I was, thank you for seeing, uh, if, if you think about, the abatement vehicle does several things, but in, in, in essence, you are looking at job creation, job retention. And so lit is funded through payroll. And so in essence, this, this shows a little fewer employees, but it's done more for lit because you've got more salary. So your local income tax actually benefited from this abatement, and that's exactly what you wanted to do.
So in addition to GKN, we have, uh, John Jones Auto Group. We also have Kimball Furniture. Um, we have the N-Kage Properties Salem. This is the new gas station slash liquor store show station that they have here in town. They recently moved. Uh, Peerless here, Salem Hotel Group, and Silverstone Properties.
So for GKN as a whole, when is the last abatement going to go off for the calendar year?
For GKN?
Yes. '27?
Give them to you, shoot out here now.
Breaking here.
GKN is 2026. It's their last one, and they have two of those.
Is this a mixture of property or some of it reflects some of its equipment?
These are all personal property.
These are all personal property. I believe that we, uh, we approved the seven abatements for GKN Center Metals. That's a group?
Okay. Roger set the tone. We're going to make a motion to approve, uh, GKN Center's personal property, seven, quantity seven abatements. Is there a second?
Second.
Dylan, second. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Okay. And we'll take the hotel group next.
So Salem Hotel Group, we have two. We have one of real estate compliance and one personal property compliance. Uh, both of these are set to expire 2025. And I do apologize, in your packet, you do not see actual numbers to date for Salem Hotel Group, or 14 employees, and an increase in salaries, 200,000. Assessed value, all of those, uh, cost and values, um, as estimated remain the same. The actual values for the project begin in 2029. The values of the project ended up being 189,525. Net values upon completion, we had just over 2 million.
Any questions on Salem Hotel Group?
I'll make a motion to approve the two tax abatements.
Vote, personal and real?
Yes.
I'll second. Steve, second. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Okay. Uh, the first M&amp;L investment parcel for John Jones.
So John Jones, we do have a total of three, M&amp;L is set to expire in 2026. This is their newer dealership there on Highway 60. And, um, then in addition to that, we have, um, we have the Public Square, um, for John Jones as well. And that is their, it is a five-year personal property. And then we have, um, another which is for their, um, the old dealership where they now have the lease fees. So that one is a 2024. And then the 2026 and, um,
The square.
And everyone else. The square is a five-year personal property. So that would suggest a period beginning in 2022. So this is the first compliance for that one.
How are they coming along with that? And how are they coming along with that?
They are, they are.
I'll make a motion to accept the John Jones Real Estate and both personal property abate.
Are you taking all four in your motion?
This is, yes.
Okay. The M&amp;L investment parcel, the, uh, Auto Group personal property, the PPD personal property, and the investment LLC real estate.
Correct.
Okay. Dan makes a motion to approve all four.
Second.
Roger, to answer your question, the square is 2033. 2033 for the real estate.
That was a two. Roger, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Okay. Uh, that takes us to NK Salem Property.
NK Salem Property, again, as I just spoke to earlier, is the new gas station slash liquor store that was just opened up. Uh, this is their first year for, uh, submitting compliance, and that it's on real estate. And so they are still not quite finished, although moved in. They still have a few finishing touches to do, but, uh, their net values, um, surpassed what they estimated at roughly 3.5 million. And he has increased the number of employees by one at about an additional 20,000 salaries.
I believe that we approve NK Salem Property abatement.
Roger makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Randy, second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Peerless.
Peerless. Jennifer Nicholson here with me from Peerless here. Again, is, is the first year. Also, so many compliance documents on their behalf. Um, and it is a five-year personal property compliance. Um, as you will see, their, uh, net values of their project, um, equal what they estimated.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, you're welcome.
Appreciate you. Now, those who are listening, if we have any questions, it's nice to ask.
Yes, certainly.
Appreciate you being here and in the community as well.
How are things going with Peerless?
Well, we're experiencing a little bit of stopping ourselves right now, but our sales team is working diligently with their customers to try and understand that and see what we need to do to, to get that headcount back up and get the sales in order to get.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve Peerless here.
Someone makes the motion. I'll second. Steve, second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Uh, you must have got the memo. We do require refreshments.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Uh, please, Kimball.
Kimball Furniture, we have two compliance documents. Both are personal property. Um, one is set to expire 2025, the other one 2026. There, you will notice with them as well, um, their employee count is down a little. However, salaries, as mentioned earlier, have increased, um, on those.
Make a motion to accept Kimball Furniture Group LLC on both abatements.
Dan makes the motion to approve both.
I'll second.
Dylan, second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Counsel, there's an E on Silverstone. Silverstone Property then. Uh, that would be your last two.
Silverstone, again, we have two. One is a real estate compliance, the other a personal property. Um, both approved in 2017, set to expire in 2029. They have maintained the same number of employees, uh, with an increase in salaries. And their estimated, um, or their net values upon completion of their project was 1.6 million, a little bit higher than what they originally estimated for that real estate.
I'll make a motion to approve the Silverstone Properties compliance.
Dylan, make the motion.
Second.
Roger, second. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Uh, anything else you want to add?
That was it?
Uh, and that has all of Salem's abatements.
And it's all of Salem's abatements.
Any questions, Roger?
Thank you.
Thank you. For, for signature, this one has the gigantic numbers.
I'll make a motion to accept general accounts payable voucher register claims.
Steve makes the motion to accept claims.
I'll second.
Dylan, second. It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Okay. Uh, Sally, did you have anything? I forgot.
No.
Okay. Uh, we had no one listed. So, uh, I didn't look at the calendar. Uh, next meeting is back on Monday, folks. Goodness, we did a sidestep for the eclipse. So the next meeting is back on Monday, so 13th. Yeah. Okay.
We're back next Tuesday.
And, and then for the work session, please, please, on the, uh, next Tuesday. Seek motion to adjourn?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Next motion. Okay. 6:42.